All right, I'd like to call over the special meeting of the Perry Municipal Authorities, February 1st, 2021 at 6:15. Roll call, please.
Hold on.
Here.
Bond.
Here.
Dilbeck. Here. Ayer.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
White.
Here.
Laurel.
Here.
Wines. Stroller.
Here. I do declare a quorum. Would you please join me in invocations here? Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for the opportunity to be able to come before you and openly pray and give you thanks for everything you've gave us, all our daily blessings every day. We just thank you so much for that. We thank you for your son, he provided for us for forgiveness. Dear Heavenly Father, I'd like to continue to ask your blessing on our nation and all around the world, all the things that are going on, we really need for you to step in and take control. I ask you to be with us tonight in this meeting, open our ears and let us all hear things that are being said and help us be productive for the city of Perry this evening. Pray all this through your son's name. Amen. All right, thank you. Item number one is the consent agenda. There's one item in the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call, please.
Hold on.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Dilbeck.
Yes.
Ayer.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes, thank you. Item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to the items on the PMA agenda. Item five, proclamation, combination of reports by the governing body. Seeing none. Item six, motion on adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Six.
Roll call, please.
Hold on.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Dilbeck.
Yes.
Ayer.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to call over to special meeting of City Council of City Perry, February 1st, 2021 at 6:17. Roll call, please.
Hold on.
Here.
Bond.
Here.
Dilbeck. Here. Ayer.
Here.
Brown. Here. White.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Wines. Stroller.
Here. I do declare a quorum. Item one is the consent agenda. Hopefully you guys will look that over. It's quite a lengthy item.
I make a motion to approve all items. I'm going to exclude four.
Four as in?
No, I'm going to tell you. Sorry.
Oh, four items. Okay.
Motion to approve all items excluding D, E, H, and I.
Do we have a second? Second. Roll call, please.
Hold on.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Dilbeck.
Yes.
Ayer.
Yes.
Brown. White.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. Item number two, items removed from the consent agenda for discussion.
I pulled out D and E only because I think I just needed a, from Bryce or whoever, just a reminder of why we took that out and what that means to pull them back in to that step program.
Yep, both contracts, both the police and fire contracts have a step plan in them. We didn't provide anyone with any CPI increase this year, any of the employees, and both the unions, the fire and police unions were good enough to agree that during the term of the contract, that would be from July 1st to June 30th, that they would freeze their step plans. So there'd be no step plans given during that time, provided that as of January 1st, we would take a look at our budget and we'd take a look at our sales tax collections and our utilities collections, and then we would agree to look at that. The step plan is really, you know, everybody doesn't step up. In order to step up, you have to have term, you know, you have to have a significant amount of term. You have to achieve certain goals. So I think that we had maybe three people in the police department and two or three people in the fire department and I had seen something. So it's not like everybody steps up, you know. It's just, you know, if it's anniversary and in fact you have achieved these things, you're able to step up. We sat and met with them, we talked about the sales tax, we talked about utilities, you know, COVID did hit hard, but it didn't hit as hard as we thought it might. You know, we were making these agreements back in April or May, so we had no idea what would happen. It was thought at that meeting, particularly by management, that, because I'm not the money guy, but you know, that it's not an appreciable amount of dollars and would probably be appropriate to reimplement the step plan for this year. So it's something they voluntarily agreed to take out. We agreed that we'd look at it in January. After January, we sat and met with them and we agreed to place it back in. It only goes forward from February 1st until June 30th. The agreement runs out June 30th anyway, and it doesn't go back and collect any of the dollars. So that's the way it is for both of those.
Okay, thank you. And I pulled out H and I. I know H for sure. We've talked about these Ford interceptors. I just want to be clear. I know the mayor's talked about this as well, that we're going out for bids with some intent, it looks as if, to potentially purchase an I, two Ford interceptors and possibly two three-quarter ton pickups. I just wanted to be clear that on, I think the H one that we talked about, that would potentially come from the Malazon grant.
Yeah, those grants have been approved.
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay.
Is that the same for the?
Yes.
Okay, so all of those in H and I are coming from the grant. Okay, that's what my clarification.
I appreciate you asking that.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other discussion? Or you said, I mean, you get all your questions?
Yes, yes, I do.
Any other discussion on those items? All right, we'll entertain the motion to approve those items.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Hold on.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Dilbeck.
Yes.
Ayer.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Laurel.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. Thank you. Item five, I'm sorry, item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to the items on the city agenda this evening.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say this would be the appropriate time to talk. I didn't see you. I didn't see you walking over here.
All right.
Thank you, guys, for the opportunity to speak this evening. I know you guys got a lot of agenda, got a lot going. I understand you're going to enter into executive session later on to speak about the Upper Black Bear Creek watershed dam project. So my name's Mason Bowley. I'm a third generation farmer, rancher, Noble County resident, and in our family, we like to look back on where we've been to kind of know where we're going. So I'm going to give you a brief history of kind of the events that have happened and kind of talk about why we're here and hopefully we can have some open discussion and open years and be productive with this meeting tonight. So in 2014, the federal government came out and said that they're going to give some money to help rehab the dam. They gave about $10 million, and the city was to come up with a portion of that. And so moving on in 2019, we received a letter, an offer for our property. We had 52 acres that would be affected. We received an offer of $65,000. We met with the city leaders, I met with Bryce, Dixon, and Larry, said that we felt our concerns and they were heard, said we weren't happy with the offer, but moved on. On February 5th of 2020, we received another letter with an offer of $68,000 for, again, our 52 acres. Again, we expressed that we weren't satisfied with the offer. It's about $1,300 an acre. Again, we got another letter on April 22nd and said make me an offer. So we did. We formally wrote, we wrote an offer. I do believe you guys discussed it. We did not receive a response on that letter, no formal written response. Instead, we got a personal visit from the mayor and the city councilman, came out to our table. We discussed the options. We had pretty good discussion that we agreed we wanted to move the project forward. The problem, the issue was, we couldn't agree on fair market value. Again, we sent them back with some ideas and some options, and I think I'll take some of the fault here. The ideas and options we threw out, we didn't really put in writing for you guys to address. So we'll take some, take some heat on that one, but there was no more communication, and that was in May of 2020. Moving right along to January 22nd, we received a letter that the city council had directed their legal counsel to acquire our property with fee simple imminent domain. Fee simple imminent domain. The whole time, we have been discussing a global easement, and now we've switched to we need to own the surface. Okay? Also in that letter, we had been originally talking about 52 acres. Now, we're shooting for 114 acres. We've more than doubled the acreage that we now need. We've gone from an easement to needing to own the property. Called Mr. Pennell, asked him, talked to him and asked why we've gone, why we've had the changes. And he said that we have, people haven't come to the table to negotiate. We haven't had any options. We understand that. That could have been our fault. We didn't formally write our options back. So my question to the city council is why we've more than doubled, why we've gone from an easement to imminent domain, and on that 114 acres, you already have what you need, which is an easement. The city needs an easement to get the $10 million project done. You need an easement. You already have an easement on 62 acres. Don't understand why you think you need to own the surface of those 62 acres. Okay? So at that point, we decided we needed some help. We hired an attorney, hired Mr. Leach to help represent us, and that was on January 26th. So there's the brief history. Fast forward, moving right along to today, February 2nd. Again, we came in, we had a nice meeting with Mr. Pennell, Mr. Kennedy, Dixon Johnson. We're open to discussion, because I think we can all agree here that reasonable minds can disagree on what fair market value is. Fair market value can be determined several ways. Okay? And so I think that whenever we had that meeting with Larry and we offered, we threw out an offer again, said we can't negotiate, that that offer's unreasonable, and we understand because it's not fair market value. Again, those same terms, it's not fair market value. So our goal here is not to take advantage of the city and do a personal increase on the property. Okay? Instead, we would like to provide an independent and verifiable estimate on what we consider the easement, what would be taken, the 52 acres. Let us hire our own certified commercial appraiser. Because I think, you know, the main goal of our family and everyone assembling here tonight is to show that we're, we don't want to be classified as that group of people or our family and our history doesn't need to be the ones that wouldn't negotiate, the ones that wouldn't come out that hired legal counsel to only negotiate for us. We want you to know that you guys, most of you have my cell phone number. If not, get ahold of me. We're here to talk and we're here tonight to provide options besides the fee simple imminent domain, because I think each and every one of you would want the same respect that if we came to your house and we wanted to purchase your property and we handed you the appraisal and said, here's fair market value, now sell it to us, you would want to get your own. What questions can I answer for you?
I guess the question I have, Mason, is, did you guys feel like that you couldn't get the appraisal on your own?
We asked, and it was said, if you get your own appraisal, we can't take that into consideration because it wouldn't be considered fair market value. I have enlisted and talked to appraisers who felt like our value was low. They have not given me a formal written
Any questions?
Mason, I'm sorry. Mason, is this just for your party or is that for, are you speaking for?
I'm speaking for Five MB. I'm sorry, I left that out. Five MB Farms LLC. I'm a member of that as well, and so I'm speaking on behalf of Five MB Farms.
Bryce, anything to add?
No, I just think that this is something that we should discuss in executive session. I think that we should discuss each one of the issues that Mason has pointed out, and certainly an appraisal got received on this property would be something that we'd look at, and we'd probably get back to our own appraiser and ask him, you know, what he thought about appraisal. I mean, if you go, if you have to go to court, it's really a battle of appraisals, you know. They have theirs, you have theirs, and ultimately the jury, you know, makes a, makes a decision on what they think the property is worth. Before we got to the jury, we would have three independent commissioners, correct? Oh, absolutely. And that, yeah, we've gone over that with the council. I mean, as you know, I think when we got what the offer was, and he is correct about what we offered, the original offer that we received, was it 248, 248,000? 234,000. 254,000. So it was, you know, almost four times the money. So, but as you know, all those numbers were brought, you know, to the city council. I just think, you know, that there should be a, or there can be a dialogue, you know. I had sent that letter out and we had put some dates in there. Of course, you're the city council. He has decided what the dates are. You know, we can move dates if you want to, if you want to move dates. It's just, we've got to begin with the end, and the end is, we have to take advantage of that, of the grant opportunity, and we have to finish this lake within a certain period of time. As you all know, and as I explained at the meeting, you know, 2020 was kind of lost to COVID. I mean, it's very difficult to communicate when we're on the telephone. You know, it just doesn't make for the same meeting as you have here. Members were out. Even at the last meeting, we only had five folks vote on that, you know, on that letter. There were a number of you that weren't here. So we have much better attendance tonight, and this is certainly something that we need to address.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned options that you had in mind. What exactly are those options?
So we could hire our own appraiser, number one, and then if you guys were open to look at that, and if it would be, we, I understand you have an appraisal that says fair market value. Again, back to my example, if I brought you an appraisal for your house and said, hey, this is fair market value, you would want to go get it. But if someone, if I'm telling you, hey, you can show me all the numbers you want, Mason. You can show me all the appraisals, all the other people that we've paid, and it doesn't matter. This is all we can pay you. It doesn't do any good for us to spend our own money. That's option one. That would be, I would say, a good step for us and the city to show good faith and say, hey, we're willing to look at the appraisal openly. Now, I realize that if it comes in astronomically high, that we're going to have to come back. We're going to have to meet somewhere. So that's option one. Option two, we're going to, if you guys don't, if we can't agree on fair market value, the courts will decide fair market value for us. We'll start, we'll go, we'll have three independent commissioners. If you guys said, hey, Mason, rather than you spend your money on that, let's agree on three independent people. I mean, we all know independent people in Noble County, landowners, residents, that's what we're going to start with, with the courts. We can get that. I mean, you guys can provide a list, we can provide a list of who we think would be independent landowners that could give a value to it, just like the courts would charge. So that would be option one, hire appraisers. Option two, let's get our own independent. They're not appraisers, they're just members of the community. Or option three would be, we can start imminent domain on a global easement. After all, that's what we need. We need a global, you guys need a global easement, and we're willing to give that. It's just the one issue, common thing we have disagreement is, what is really fair market value? And I hope you guys can understand that. I mean, you know, we've had some good dialogue. I talked to the appraiser, and we just disagreed on the value.
Any more questions? Seeing none, Mason, I'll assure you, we'll have this discussion in executive session tonight.
Okay. And if you guys are in there and you're like, hey, call me, okay? Phones by me all the time. I hope this past midnight, don't call me. But, you know, we don't, I mean, I like Bryce and all, but you know, when we go to court and start fighting, all he's thinking about is adding on to his house, okay, or pool, or another hot tub or something. So we don't need to rack up a bunch of legal fees. Let's work this out, and let's come up with the deal. So, thank you guys for talking.
Thank you, guys. And thanks to the whole family, seriously.
Thank you for hearing us.
All right, any more comments from those assembled pertaining to the agenda? Now that the whole assembly is leaving. All right, well, we want to, hey, Mason, hang on a sec. Where's Mason? You need to be here for this. Hang on. Okay, item five, proclamation, combination of reports by the governing body. All right, Mason, if you would take this back to the bank for us, okay?
Okay.
I would like to personally thank First Bank for allowing us to use this building, Charity Moxley.
You bet.
Charity has jumped through hoops for us, got keys to us, and helped Tyson, and you guys have been way over accommodating. So the city of Perry appreciates the First Bank.
She comes and posts the agenda for me every time.
So it's a great deal, Mason. We appreciate you guys helping us.
You bet.
Oh, and Bob's on the board, too, I guess. I didn't know that.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Bob.
They had a little.
Also, I just wanted to remind everybody that filing period for the reelection started today, tomorrow, and Wednesday at, down to courthouse. So if you wish to refile for your seat, get on down there and get it done. Anything else?
Yes, I'm handing these out. This is the new state law. I don't know if it's been adopted yet. Today is the first day of the session, and it was supposed to be introduced and passed, and at least our senator believes that the governor should sign it within two weeks. And what would this would do would reinstate the ability to Zoom. And this one doesn't have a cutoff period. It says until the governor declares that the pandemic is over. Okay? So with this, if this passes, we will have that ability to do it again, meaning whether we're going to begin that or, I mean, you say we either have to Zoom or attend.
Yes, one or the other.
So from the, from the, now, if you had some kind of different equipment or something we could do, if we had different equipment, then we could attend and we could have Zoomers Zoom, which I'm all in favor of doing, although we don't have that item on here, you know, allowing folks like Jamie, you know, you know, not to, you know, not to have to come because of quarantine and other issues. So in any event, I think that's something that we should, that we should consider during this time, but I wanted to give you this.
Does the mayor get one of those?
Oh, I'm sorry. Larry, did I give you?
He gets to talk.
He gets to talk sometimes. Okay, Bryce, a question on this, the cutoff date, does the governor have the right to change that? Can he come in and say, I want the cutoff date to be made or something?
Yeah, under this bill, he's the one that makes the determination of when the pandemic ends.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's not a date, whichever one to occur earlier, they took that language out. You can see that if you look at.
Well, I just wondered if he could reinstate that now before?
No, you know, that, yeah. You know, if he could have, it's my understanding he would have. But there was some legal opinion saying that the way it was written, it wasn't capable of being reinstated. Quite frankly, it would have been good, because, you know, Thanksgiving is when everything went to pot, and that's when, that's kind of when this thing ended.
All right.
Would like to say, I don't think it takes a whole lot to do Zoom and be there, because we have in our Sunday school class, make people zoom in that are staying home, and you know, we have the screen up there that we can see them and they can see our class.
Yeah, apparently it's some, some equipment we need, right?
More broadcasting and stuff, that makes sense.
More broadcasting and stuff, that makes it a little different.
Yeah. It's also a much different space, like physical space.
All right. Thank you for those comments. Item number six, the city manager comments.
Just want to welcome Jerry Allen back. He's our part-time code enforcement officer. Jerry, this will be Jerry's third year. He's worked for us from February, March till the end of September. Does a great job to help all of us, especially Brian Henry and Jesse Liveall, our building inspector. So it's nice to have him back. Also, I want to recognize Brian Henry. Brian, I apologize if I get on my email today, but you've just passed a test that is the first in the country, correct? Would you just tell the council and our audience what this means and what you've done?
Thanks for putting me on the spot.
You're welcome.
So the International Code Council is who does all the expertise certifications in code enforcement and building inspection. Passing this, now I'm unlimited in code enforcement, like I'm the first in the country that has maxed out their code enforcement certifications. And they introduced something called a credential of learning and achieving. It sounds a lot cooler than it did. They accidentally put it on their website, and they weren't aware they did it. So I was like, just sat there looking, I was like, hey, you know, oh, hey, I passed this class. So I bought it. They freaked out, because they were like, whoa, we don't know how we did this, but, okay, you're our anything. So it was experimental, to say the least. Lots of glitches involved. But I'm the first disaster response technician in the United States. So.
Good job, Brian. Thank you. I appreciate you letting me put you on the spot there. He does work hard, and I think you've, you've seen results. Prior to the ice storm, it's been a little bit difficult. After the ice storm, you see the results of, of their hard labor and what they do, but they do a great job. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
That's it?
That's it.
Any questions? All right. Item seven, consider approval of ordinance number 2021-02 of the City Perry, the City Council of the City of Perry, many chapter 12, article two, the Perry Municipal Code 2020, by many certain modular home size requirements and adding additional requirements similar to those found in the new manufactured home ordinance in section 12-247 subsection S, by providing for figures of mobile manufactured and modular homes in the new subsection T, and by the amendment of the title of section 12-247, amending chapter 12 of the Perry Municipal Code 2020, by amending section 12-248, titled New Manufactured Home Regulations, providing for certain amendments to the square footages and adding other requirements for new manufactured homes in certain zoning districts, amending chapter 12 of the Perry Municipal Code 2020, by the amendment of section 12-271A, providing clarifying language which provides manufactured homes and new manufactured homes are not permitted in R1 single-family residential districts, providing for repealer, savings, codification, severability, penalty, and declaring emergency. All right. I think that we've seen this, tried to see this, tried to do something with this ordinance several times now. And hopefully, we've got it narrowed down to something that hopefully we can accept. I went to the planning commission meeting last Thursday, and this was presented to them. It was presented with manufactured homes being allowed in R1, which is kind of, I would say the majority, but a large portion of our, our city is R1. It was saying that we can take a, a manufactured home, which is, I guess. Okay, there's a zone. I never did.
I put it in there. It's after the ordinance.
Okay.
Maybe, yeah, it's part of the pictures, but after.
Yeah, okay.
If you look at the paint, the hot paint.
Yeah, the paint, as Dixie claims it, hot paint, is, is the, the R1 district, which is like Lakeview up north, Fairway Edition, East Maple Edition, and then south, you know, Coffee Drive down South, correct? So, so some of the, some of the newer portions of our, of our town. But anyway, not all the members of the planning commission were there, but they couldn't get a vote to give us a recommendation on this item with manufactured homes being allowed in the R1 district. And I think, I'm not sure how we got to that, but at one point, the discussion always has been to allow manufactured homes in RG and AG. And somehow we pushed it over into R1. So this ordinance, Bryce, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but is now saying that there is no new manufactured homes allowed in R1, correct?
That's correct. And, and I would say that that was the, the main objection.
Correct.
That the, that the planning commission had concerning it. You know, all that the ordinance does other than that is it reduces the modular home size in RG from 1,200 to 1,000 square feet, and from R1 from 1,200 to.
1,600 to 1,500.
Yeah, it's 15. Yeah, I'm sorry. That, that's incorrect on the agenda. It's, it's from 1,600 to 1,500. So it reduced, slightly reduces the size. You remember, our rule used to be modular homes could be placed anywhere. I mean, and it was that way for a number of years. So this was actually an attempt by us to ensure that they were properly sized in the, in the correct districts. This one is reducing it a little bit, I guess, because of the, of the product. Other than that, we added things which would make it better. You know, parking lot issues, you know, parking spaces, and we added more protection for, for the residents. In new manufacturing, we did drop that from 1,200 to 1,000 square feet. And then we applied new special rules for, for garages. So, you know, if, if you don't mind the reduction in size slightly, and, and you don't mind the increased rules to help make it consistent with the communities and adding amenities, and, and you, and you agree with the planning commission that new manufactured homes shouldn't be in R1 districts, then you're gonna, then you're gonna like this. But currently, they're not allowed in R1 districts either. So if you don't really care to reduce the size, or you don't like the additional rules, it can stand as it is. But I do think that the planning commission wanted it continued so that their other members might be able to see it. But I think their main intention was to remove the R1, the new manufactured homes from R1.
Bryce, down there, item seven down there, where it says, no modular home less than 1,000 square feet. Should that be manufactured?
Here on page three?
Yeah.
No, that's correct. Oh, we're talking, yeah, no, this should be modular. This should be modular. But this should be.
You're not gonna buy a modular home at 1,000 square feet?
That's, that's Larry. Larry set the, set the, the square footage rules.
No one's gonna bring a house three, or three, or two or three more pieces at 1,000 square feet, Charlie. Can you buy a modular home at 1,000 square feet?
Yes, you actually can, yes. And the nice, nice thing about the changes that we're doing here is it does give other options for those who would like to have an house. But one of the things I did was, I went through the county, especially over the Coffin, and this is Willshire and Coffey, just to see exactly how, what the size of the homes are. On Willshire, the average size is 1,495 square feet. In Coffey, it's 1,507. True, there are some larger homes, but for the most part, they're, they're smaller homes. So this gives a little bit of extra options for those who would like to build there, or would like to go into the RG as well.
You know, the, the one thing about modular homes is, you know, modular is a word, the other word is off-site built. Okay? They're under the same standards. They're under the, under the International Residential Code. So they're under the same standards as, as homes built right there. And, and that's the way folks look at it, you know? What is the code required? You know, with respect to safety. And of course, they cost more. So that's what, that's the difference. Manufactured homes are not built in accordance with the International Residential Code. They're built in accordance with, with a HUD standard. But that, that's sealed on the home, and so they certify that, that it is built in accordance with that, with that standard. I suppose it's a lesser standard, but they've continued to improve. And I'm sure that it's a much higher standard than any home built, what, pre-1960, maybe?
1974.
Yeah, but even a home built.
Right.
That, I mean, it, it, it's, it's absolutely comparable to 50% of the, of the housing, the present housing here in, in town. And of course, it has to be new. You know, it has to be new, never lived in for that, for that to work. So just give me a little bit more information. You know, you got, you folks have seen this. We've had this in, in front of you a few times. But, but we took out the part that was, that was onerous to the planning commission, and, and, and maybe onerous to some of you, I don't know.
Any questions?
Yeah, several.
Imagine that. Go ahead.
That's why I figured I'd start off with several.
You didn't pick one of those.
I guess I'll start with, where did this come to us from? How did it come up? Again?
Larry wanted to reduce the square footage and, and to permit.
We did pass one of these already.
Yeah, it, you, this is passed. Everything that's not underlined is already ruled now. And so wanted that amendment, then David Payne wanted to put in the, the figures. Okay? So that kind of got added to the planning commission. And then after the planning commission meeting, we, we included everything that the, and the planning commission took off after that ordinance, a bunch of changes that they wanted, quite frankly, it read better after they, after they went through it. After the meeting, you know, they said that they'd like that coming back to them. We thought, because, you know, we bring their recommendation to you, and their recommendation is that they continue it to another meeting to allow more of their members. We believe that the reason, the, the chief reason they wanted to do that was to continue to discuss the elimination of R1 in there. But your actions tonight can be to approve it as it is, amend it, send it back to the planning commission, let them, their full body, you know, take a motion, see if they like that, and then refer it back up. It's just you had a meeting now, and in the original notice, we said it was gonna come here, so it's come, so it's come here.
So their, that was my second question. Their, their meeting, by all intents and purposes, this item was continued?
No, this item was discussed for about an hour.
Okay.
And, and items were amended to the ordinance. I, I didn't, I didn't delete and underline those things. I think everything that they did made it a better ordinance.
Right.
They really weren't additional. They were, they were clarifications they wanted to put in. And, and so we included those. But their motion was actually to continue it.
That's what my question.
To their next planning commission meeting, to allow greater participation. And that, of course, is you can do that right now by saying, you know, I make a motion that we do what the planning commission did.
Okay.
Let's send it to them.
Right.
Right.
That's, that's their recommendation.
That's their.
I talked, I talked to two of the members, and that was, I mean, after the meeting, I talked to them, and that was their main objective, was the R1.
Okay. Well, now more in the meat of it. Are we saying, are we defining modular and mobile homes separately? Or, sorry, modular and manufactured?
Yes. And, and I'm sorry, those are provided in other, in other sections, modular home is, there, there's other definitions in other parts of the code.
Okay.
Okay? That aren't being changed at all. And of course, the new manufactured home definition isn't being changed, except as you look at the, you know, under it, that's page three and four. This main definition is not being changed. But then we provided all these clarifications, which, you know, I think strengthen it in the, in, in the location that it's gonna be placed. It's, it's additional requirements.
So if I'm reading correctly, then neither a manufactured nor a modular home would be allowed in R1?
No, modular homes are permitted in, in R1. Modular homes are permitted anywhere. You know, they, they used to be, they were permitted anywhere. And the reason is, as I've said, is they're just off-site built homes in tune with the, you know, square with the International Residential Code.
What it says, Derek, is not less than 1,500.
Yeah, I had, what I read up here in the bowl, I had my head backwards.
You know, that, that would be hard to stop, because it's, the only difference is they build off-site. I mean, it's, it's just like the ones that are there. Now, I don't know about the appearance. I don't know that I've ever seen. The only modular home I'm familiar with is the one on the turn, that beautiful Victoria on, on the highway coming in. And that was brought in in pieces and erected. And that thing must have been a small fortune. It's beautiful though.
What is the orangish slash tanish, probably Dixie, on the, on the map, the zoning map? I can't read the legend, sorry. A long bird, if that helps. Is that commercial?
Yeah.
Yeah, all commercial.
Yeah, they would all be C1.
Yellow being RG? And green being AG?
Uh, R, R, yeah, yellow being RG.
And then what was blue? City, city.
Special use?
City.
City.
City or school. I figured that one out correctly. I think that's the majority of what I got.
I've got a couple of questions. So if someone is not looking, so this is basically just for another option. It's not really for an affordable option, or, I mean, it's really just for, so someone has another means of deciding what they want to do, right?
I would say yes. Let me talk about the one other option that is in here. Okay? And that is, you can place, under our rules, a manufactured home. That's not a new manufactured home. Because a new manufactured home is one that's never been lived in, right? So you can place a manufactured home that has been previously lived in, or that may have some age to it, in an RG district. But you have to go through the same process that you go through if you want it to rezone a lot. There has to be an advertisement in the newspaper. You have to send notice out to the folks within 300 feet of the property. There has to be a public hearing, and there has to be approval. There has to be a recommendation from the planning commission, whatever it is, and then it comes to the city council and approved. So you can take, you say, a lesser home. You can take another housing product, you know, that's something other than a new manufactured home, and, and you can place it here. It just requires a process. And that's why we put this, this in the code, so that you didn't have to go through all that. If you were gonna put something new, you know, in here that's never been used before, so it's, you know, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna look right. so it's, you know, it's going to look right and be contemporary, we're going to add a few more rules, and we're going to say, yeah, you have to run that through a committee because the committee wants to look at it, make sure it's right. So there's a portion of that in there. But we're not going to do any more process. You can do that by right. Now, if the committee says no for the new manufactured home, then they have a right to appeal that up here. But there is a right for another product, and that would be, you know, a manufactured home that could be placed with a process, but only in RG.
That kind of brings another question to mind. How many people have tried to bring something in like that and have succeeded?
Several, but none recently, okay? But several. We talked about, at the meeting, the last one that came. Didn't they say, which one did they say, fifteen years ago? It was a city employee.
Oh, yeah. The firefighter.
Yeah, firefighter. You know, I don't know if we've had, I mean, anybody that comes in and requests it, we'll put it through the process. Now, do they know? Do they not know? I mean, you know, maybe we should have a brochure, you know, that explains this. And perhaps, once we get this done, a brochure that explains it would be very helpful if somebody asked, you know, what are my options? And we can, you know, give them a brochure so that they know that there is that process.
Do these have a resale that's close to the price they are when they're new?
I don't know. Larry, do these have a resale value of what they would be when they're new or close to it?
I think Brian was talking, not to interrupt, but Brian was talking to the planning commission that the expectancy is like thirty years?
On modular, I'm guessing.
What about manufactured?
Manufactured, I didn't know that, and I still don't.
The reason that I ask all that is, if someone wants to put one of these homes in, we have all these requirements of, you know, how the footing is going to be in. It has to be a porch slab. By the time someone puts twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars worth of concrete in, are they even going to be able to get a loan to cover the home and the expense of setting it up?
Well, I don't know that, but I don't see us doing it any other way. We want it to be set on a solid foundation, so...
Well, I understand that, but the way this states is a solid slab.
Only for the modular, I believe, not the manufactured, correct?
Yeah, right. Manufactured home, you could put on a stem wall type foundation.
Perimeter wall, yeah.
You have a stem wall that's open on either end, and they drive the truck right through, set it on top of the stem wall, attach it as we prescribe there.
But that does require footing as well.
It does require footing, and that, those come in one piece. And if you look, if you're out on 412, that's what we're talking about.
Well, I wouldn't say one piece necessarily, even our documentation has a double line. Our documentation has a double line for a manufacturer.
I know, that's what David Payne, I mean, those are the figures he keeps being...
No, I was just saying, we can't say it's necessarily one piece.
Yeah, right.
I just, I keep fighting myself back and forth on this issue because I want the options there. And I want people to be able to afford to do this.
We do want to add more housing options, and we understand that they're going to be at different price points. But we wanted to start with what we had, basically, as far as ordinances and zoning is concerned.
The council, the previous councils have always been against trailer houses here in Perry. Just randomly put trailer houses wherever they want, you know, in RG type. I can remember several years back, there was a, I think it's called Big Chief or something, right Bryce?
Yes, Big Chief.
Yeah, they were wanting to establish a trailer house park type thing out by Sunders Corner. And I ran into that guy about a year ago. In Palm City, they have a Big Chief trailer park up there. It's like an encampment type thing, where workers and things. And I remember he'd come down here and talked to us. He didn't have a whole lot of good things to say today about our attorney. I admitted him. Because Bryce stands up for what we want. But anyway, you know, that's always another option, but previous councils, just, they were against putting trailer houses in. I mean, you can still put a trailer house in today. It's a one-time deal, am I right? If you own this lot, you have a trailer house on it. When you own that trailer house, you can take the old one off, put a new one on at one time. But you can't buy a lot, correct? And bring a trailer house and put it on that lot.
Yeah, and I struggle with that because you have some neighborhoods that we're not going to allow that to happen, but that would be ten times nicer than what's sitting on
Has it like an old home or something?
Yeah. I mean, look at all these that we end up condemning, and we end up paying for it. But that has to sit there. We can't bring something else in that they can't afford like that.
Well, I think it's a long-term objective. You know, down the road, ten or fifteen years, what's the trailer house going to look like, you know?
Maybe better than what's sitting there.
Maybe.
Watching your homes, the manufactured homes, turn on trailer houses, aren't they possible?
I mean, they don't even make mobile homes anymore. What's, everything's manufactured now. A mobile home would have to have a lot of date on it. I mean, who would have to be...
Yeah, these manufactured homes come in, come in on the I-beam, they jack them up, build them, and put I-beams under them, put axles under them, bring them in, lay them on your slab. You know, there's not, there's not a tongue, or axles, or trailer house type frame that they have to remove.
Yeah, when all is said and done, I want them to have the option. And I want them to be able to afford to do it. But I want to make sure that all of our ordinances and regulations don't cost more than they're going to be able to get a loan for.
So what's your suggestion?
Well, I mean, I think before we make a decision like that, we should maybe talk to some manufacturers, see what these homes are going to cost. In the end, I think that we should see what that setup is going to cost. And maybe we should talk to a banker, someone that's going to make the loan on that, and say, hey, are you going to be able to loan for this?
But that's not really, in my opinion, that's not really up to the council to worry about.
Well, it is if we're telling them they can do it and they can't get a loan for it.
Well, then they don't do it.
So what's the point in it?
For the people that can't do it.
Well, so if you want to pay cash, this option's free.
Is that what you're saying? If you want a trailer house, you got to pay cash?
Well, I never said cash.
What other options would you think of?
Well, what I'm trying to say is, I didn't buy my, I bought my house because I could afford to buy my house. So I'm not going to go buy a house that I can't afford.
Did you get a loan for your house?
Yes. But that was up to me to do. I didn't ask the city council to do it.
Yeah, but what he's saying is somebody won't loan because the deal doesn't make sense.
What I'm saying is, you don't want to approve something that's not possible unless you have to pay cash for it.
Well, there's people out there that do want to do that, so we have to set this ordinance so those people that do want to do that have a directive from the city.
I see what both of you are saying.
No, I see what you're saying also, but I just don't, I think that you're stepping over in an area that's not up to us.
I would disagree.
Yeah, I completely disagree.
If we propose an option that's not possible, then why propose it? That's what he's saying.
So we just take it off the board, deploy it?
Hold on. There's three different things we're talking about here. Trailer home is one of them, and that's not on the board tonight. Then we have, what, I guess, let me try and reword what I think he said. If you have a manufactured, they both start with the end, so if I say the wrong one, don't get me wrong here, but manufactured home, and what we require to do that, then sells to the bank, but they're not going to give loans out for those things, then why should we do it? Now, on the other hand, this is already a place. It's just changing a couple of small things. I guess I'm playing mediator here at this point, but you guys had two different points that you were talking about. And he's saying if a bank won't loan the money because it costs too much to do, and it's more, the loan would be more than the house is worth when you do it, and a bank won't loan, if that's the case, then why have the rules? If we do it in a way that the bank's still loan, then we should have the rules, I guess, is basically what you're saying.
If you can afford to pay cash for that, then you don't need this option already.
Usually twenty percent down, you're going to get a loan on anything, though.
It also depends on your credit score and your collateral, things like that. There's a lot of things that go into play, other than just the value of that property. And if you've got a trust in your name, or, I mean, I, you know, there's just so many different...
There is.
...that people can have when you go to a bank to get a loan. So I think for a bank to say, yes, we will loan you, we will loan you this money on this project, is a generic statement, would be very, very difficult to ask any sort of lender or bank to, a pint.
It'd be fairly easy if the extra things we require were more than a manufactured home cost. But I'm not saying that. I don't know the numbers. I don't know what numbers were required by this.
I don't either. I just don't want it to cause that.
Well, it would be interesting, maybe, we need to go to a manufacturer home deal and say, how do you know we set these? And I guarantee you, they're all going to say, we set them on concrete, or we set them on a stem wall or something. They can't just go set them on the ground. And I think, and Curtis, I respect what you're saying, but what this ordinance says is, if you want this style home, this is what we suggest. This is what we're required. So we don't want someone to, we don't want someone to bring this manufactured home in and set it on the dirt.
Now, I get that. I just want to make sure. I agree with you completely on what you are saying. I'm just saying, I want to make sure that our regulations are not going to cost them more than they can get a loan for. Because if that is the case, there's really no point in telling most of our people that they can even do it.
Well, does anyone know, Brian or Larry, either one, because it seems like to me you guys have been the two that have been investigating this? What is a suggestion for the manufacturer on how to place these units?
What we've got written down.
They are written down?
It's all pretty standard stuff, that they said this is how they put these out on the wall.
So most manufactured homes come with this in a package?
It's, yeah, it's required whenever they tie them to the perimeter foundation.
I'm assuming that they won't probably want a warranty, their home, if it's not stationed properly.
Correct. In order for them to verify the warranty, they have to install the service specs, which is either way, because if it faults out, it falls back on them.
So in that case, it's coming, the foundation, whatever we want to call it, is coming as a package deal from the manufacturer.
It's included in the price of the home, correct? That's what I understood.
If you're looking at me, you don't...
No.
Oh, okay.
That I can attest to.
And they would require a covered porch and a garage.
That's on modular homes?
We do want these to fit in the neighborhood, the look of the neighborhood. If we didn't care about that, we wouldn't have any of these rules.
I thought we included it. So correct me if I'm, I thought we included the garage with, previously.
They are included.
On manufactured homes?
Well, whatever it reads there. What I'm saying is that if we didn't care about...
Not on manufactured homes. Only in R1.
Well, but now we've eliminated them from R1. You're exactly right. But they're no longer in R1.
But the modular homes now...
What we're saying is, if you're going to put in a garage, it needs to be put, whether it's put on originally or later, it's got to be attached, and carports can be used. So it doesn't require the garage. But if you are going to put it in now or later, it must be attached, and no carports are permitted.
That was one of the things that the planning commission...
That's one of the things the planning commission had.
They were very specific about, they want a bunch of those Carolina-type carports.
Where did we, when we previously passed this, I thought we required...
It was either/or for modular homes. It was for modular homes. It was either/or, and we changed it to both.
I don't believe maybe back there, kind of requiring?
Yeah, it did. It got picked up by the planning commission.
We need manufactured and modular on two different deals.
Yeah, I know. It's all, it's all together, but it's all in the same section. But one of the other things they wanted is this regulation is called Mobile Home Regulations, and you can tell we changed it to Mobile Manufactured and Modular Home Regulations.
So the only thing we're requiring for manufacturer, above beyond the foundation, and what we're talking about there, is basically the driveway?
For modular homes. Yeah, I would say that's true. And, I mean, they'll be done anyways, because the cost of the modular home is going to be, well, you know, it's going to be a hundred dollars a square foot or more. And it's going to be, you know, those are built in accordance with the International Residential Code. They're not going to be cheap.
I thought I had all this down, but it gets more confusing the more I look at it.
You know, Curtis, I think that your point is talking about locations in the community where there may be an opportunity for a different kind of housing, which would be, which would cost less. Now, you know, we are in the business of utility accounts. And so the community really needs to balance the, you know, the desire we have for utility accounts with the type of housing that you want. Bill already said that Pocahontas City has a trailer park, right?
A trailer or RV?
Both.
Both.
Just kind of...
Yeah. I mean, you know, there has been that discussion out there at the south. We call it the south commercial park. There was that discussion there. I think that he probably didn't want to put up the kind of money that needed to be put up for the improvements that we needed to have there. But, you know, if you find a location having a KOA or a, you know, that kind of park, you know, we're in the business of selling electric, water, and sewer out there. Electric, we'd be able to handle. Sewer would be a giant cost, you know, having to serve that, because we'd have to bring it on-site. Waters, is there? Is there another location? And so you look at the community, it's like a lot of other places have done. They've looked at communities, they've decided to redevelop certain areas and to make, you know, different housing in different areas. The question is, is that something that we're interested in? Because one thing we are interested in is utility accounts. So we need to, we need to balance that. You know, are people not able to live here because, you know, they can't find adequate housing? And if they could find it, would they bring it here? And is there a location where we could have it placed?
Yeah, I don't like trailer parks, but...
We could do a small, we could do a small house community, you know, a small home community, where they would be, you know, less in cost. But, you know, you would want to segregate that in a place where it'd be consistent among those homes in that community. Because, you know, if you're living next to it and you've got a stick-built home that you've done a hundred thousand dollar remodel on, you're going to have a problem with a six hundred square foot home put next to you. But, you know, those are all, you're making good points. I mean, you know, those are the kind of issues that, that we ought to be talking about, or that we could be talking about.
Well, it's like, for this option that we're discussing, the people that can afford what we already have, yeah, this is great. But I would love to see some things open up for the people that can't. It's like, I mean, there's really not that...
It's like, I mean, there's really not that many options for that because we don't allow it. Well, it, it surprises me that more people haven't processed manufactured homes through that exception, you know, that we have, the notice and opportunity to be heard.
Manufactured or modular?
Manufactured. It, it's not mentioned here, it's somewhere else, but there's a, there's a provision that allows manufactured homes, don't have to be new, don't have to be new, could, could be located. Remember, this is new manufactured homes.
Yeah, but a manufactured is the home, the one that's more like to the standard.
Yes. No, it's the same definition, it just.
Jimmy Williams, the firefighter, removed one here. That's what Bryce is saying.
That one came on a trailer, I'm pretty certain. That one came on a trailer, like, where they removed the.
I don't know. It was called manufactured home.
It was called manufactured.
So I know he, but the point is, it was, he had it somewhere else and he brought it here and set it here.
Both of them we're talking about are that way.
Yeah. But, but what Bryce is saying, it had to go through a process, you know, for all your neighbors to say okay. And with the manufactured home, like, we're talking about a new one, you could buy a lot up there and put it on there as long as it was an R G, and we would have to do hearings and all these other things.
So it gets rid of that. That's why I was confused. Okay.
Makes it simpler.
It should be gotten rid of if we've already implemented this.
Yes.
So then that process you talked about no longer exists, right?
No, it does exist, but, but that's for, but, but that's not for a new manufactured home. I mean, that's for the home that he's talking about that's, that is, is used and can be brought in from somewhere else. That one wouldn't have to apply, it would go through a, it's a use-by-review process in an R, in an, in an R G district with notice and opportunity to be heard and it be placed, you know, after a hearing. But we haven't gotten rid of that, and people can avail themselves of that. And, you know, I'm sure that these manufactured homes, after, after six years, the, the value of them, it probably drops like a Cadillac, you know, and that's significant. It almost drops in half in price over a, over a, you know, five, six-year period. So we do have that.
I think, Curtis, I think this is the conversation that, that you wanna have, thinks a valid point, but that's not what's really in front of us tonight.
We're not allowing that, right?
What is in front of us tonight is if you can afford this home, is this how you want it to be set up?
Are we ready for a motion? I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2021-02.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Colner.
Derek.
Colner.
No.
Bond.
Yes.
Go back.
No.
Ecker.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Let's see.
Is it fire?
Yes.
Bond, Ecker, Brown, Moore, Stroller.
So passes. Thank you.
Just someone who wants emergency.
Motion on emergency?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Colner.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Go back.
Yes.
Ecker.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Stroller.
All right, item number eight, consider approval of ordinance number 2021-01 of the
City Council of the City of Perry, Oklahoma, pending Chapter 14 of the Perry Municipal Code 2020 entitled Streets, Sidewalks, Public Works, Article One, to be entitled use and construction of streets and sidewalks by the addition of a new section 14-117, to be entitled sidewalks required for new development. Definitions, requirements, sidewalks, classifications, exceptions, providing for a P U R S A D codification, severability, penalty, and declaring emergency. Okay, council, uh, Larry, you have something to say?
I've got to speak now.
You already passed them out, okay. All right.
Thank you.
Dixie passed out, or someone passed out a, a new copy of the ordinance that you don't have in your packet. What is different about it is item A on the first page. Yeah, item A on the first page under new development shall mean any subdivision of land in the city which occurs after enactment of that section resulting in a development of three or more lots and tracks. This went before the planning commission the other night. Also, we hashed this out for probably forty-five minutes to an hour, and in the beginning, they were talking about if you, if you bought a house, it's like, like you said, a vacant lot, you know, or, or you dilapidated a home, you tear that home down, you have four, let's say four homes, you have a hole, a vacant lot, a hole, and a vacant lot. Well, if you put up new construction, they want you to put a sidewalk in there. What's the point of that if you have no sidewalk, sidewalk, no sidewalk, sidewalk? It doesn't make any sense. So, after all the discussion, Larry said, well, how about we just use, put sidewalks in, in new subdivisions? Like, if they're gonna build a subdivision down there, south of Coffee Drive, in that land they're talking about, they're talking about up on that piece of property on Locust Street up there, we put a sidewalk, you know, it'd be required in new subdivisions. And they're talking about just on one side of the street, not both sides of the street. And so item A in, in the, in what the packet that we got, we originally got, it didn't really, we didn't feel like it really read that way. We had discussion today on that. It wasn't really that clear, so we just left item one from the original document that was sent out Friday. And so we narrowed that down, and then on page, the next page, on page two, under D, exceptions, we removed item A. I mean, I'm sorry, item five.
This just becomes a subdivision rule. We haven't really had an opportunity to even open up the subdivision rule book because we haven't had a new subdivision in so long. But we, we do have folks talking about new subdivisions. In our existing subdivision regulations, we don't have the word sidewalks. I did a word search, there's not one word a sidewalk. So what you're doing today is you're, you're passing an ordinance that says new subdivision, you put one in, three or more lots, you're gonna put in sidewalks, you're gonna put them on just one side of the street. You're, we're making a rule that if somebody files for a plat, you know, they're gonna do that. It doesn't go any further than that. So this is a, and the folks that we've talked about, we're gonna put in sidewalks. We just wanna make sure that if somebody's putting in a new subdivision with three or more lots, that, that we'll get sidewalks in that. It doesn't apply to redevelopment, it doesn't apply if the subdivision is already in existence, all that has been removed.
So some, some on the council, Mike and Derek maybe, will remember, you know, we're all the time trying to improve, improve neighborhoods and improve developments, and, and Mike, because you live there, and in, in Parkway Edition, and we had the same problem in East Maple Edition. When they put the subdivisions in, they didn't build the streets right. So then we annexed them into the City of Perry, and then them streets become our problem. And that's what happened up there where you live, Mike. And so that was something we did several years back, that if you, if you build a subdivision and you wanna be annexed into the City of Perry, you gotta build the streets the way we say we would have built them. Because we're gonna inherit that street that's gonna become our problem. And since I've been on the council, it's happened twice. I mean, East Maple Edition was done way back, but we realized that those streets weren't built right. So this is just another improvement on subdivision ordinances.
So if someone puts in a new subdivision of three lots that are all on the same side of the road, does that allow them to say, no, I want them to put a reverse street?
I think when they do the, Larry, I maybe, maybe you can speak, but when they, when they come in and say that they're gonna build a subdivision, they're gonna lay a plat out, and, and at that point, we will plat where that sidewalk's gonna be.
Correct. There, there are five or six of us that meet together as a, as a group, and we hash those out with the, with the developer right there, looking to build it. And again, this is not, for infill lots, if you buy some infill lots over on Grove and you wanna build a house there, those have already been subdivided. And I think that this is for, this is for new developments, and right now, we have two that are good size, that, and we're talking about twenty-two to twenty-eight acres.
I see what you're saying. I don't think that answered my question, but you might.
I think, I, I, I think, I think I see what you're saying. If we change the language to new development shall mean any new subdivision of land in the city requiring a plat. I think that.
Well, aren't they, don't they require a plat anyway?
No, because sometimes there's lot splits. A lot split is a subdivision of land, so requiring a plat, I think that improves this and makes it, and makes it, and I think that's where you were going with it. I think that's where you're going with your question. So I think that, I think that's good. It narrows it even further, makes it more restrictive, you know, you gotta have a plat, but it doesn't allow you to, okay, I've got this lot I want, you know, I'm gonna divide it just simply right here, everybody has an entrance, it's not a real issue, well, you gotta put it inside.
Well, that would be called a subdivision, wouldn't it?
Yeah, and any sub, any division of land, any division of land is a subdivision, a lot split is a type of subdivision. So I think, I think, uh, land requiring.
So we had lot splits at my house, so we've got a new subdivision up there?
No. This one is gonna require a plat, requiring the plat, or require, yeah, requiring the plat, which is, which is something other than, than a lot split. I think that if you put that in after city, it, it addresses kind of what you brought up, and it narrows even it further, which is probably what we wanna do, because we're talking about when they come in and they're gonna, we're gonna do a new subdivision by plat, not just a simple, you know, lot split or a couple lot splits, you know, got to put it, I, I think that, I think that's better.
Okay. Next, next one would be, just for clarity, the builder gets done sidewalks, houses, everything in, in this new neighborhood, who has to keep up that sidewalk afterwards?
Well, if it's in the right-of-way, it, it's on the property, it's on the property of the neighbor, okay? It's the neighbor's sidewalk, and the sidewalk is dedicated to us, you know, and we have certain duties over streets and sidewalks. We don't have a duty to necessarily replace, we have a good faith duty, I mean, just like, you know, somebody can't make us fix their street, you know, to the standard that they would like in front of their house, they can't make us fix their sidewalk, you know, to a standard that they feel is appropriate. They can do that. We can have a program addressing dollars, but on right, on public right-of-way, if there's something more than a trivial defect, and the Supreme Court has determined a trivial defect is as much as five inches, but it all depends where, is there notice, there's lots of other issues involved.
Whatever's an HOA in place.
Well, normally they do it, but, you know, if it's, if it's in right-of-way, if it's in right-of-way, it can be argued that we have a duty. If somebody trips on sidewalk, they can make a, they can file a tort claim against us, but the Supreme Court's pretty big on trip and fall claims and on trivial defects. All these will be on the property of the property owner, so they certainly have a duty. But it's within the right-of-way of the city, so I would say it's a, it's a blended duty, not for us to necessarily go out and repair it, because we have, you know, a hundred miles of sidewalks or so in, in this community. But, you know, a case can be made if there's, if there's slipped, if there's slipped, it's just like they can on streets, the street signs, surfaces, and the like.
But what, I guess, what my question was, Bryce, if there's an HOA in place, can we negotiate who's responsible for what?
Well, when they dedicate, right of, when they dedicate, you know, normally when a plat is filed, they dedicate the, the rights-of-way, the easements to the city, and we accept those easements, we accept them, and, and we agree to take over, you know, a certain level of, of maintenance on them. But it doesn't make, it doesn't make us an insurer, and it's still on their property. So I would still say, you know, at best, it's a, it's a, it's a mixed duty, just like taking care of the streets, it's just compare it to the same thing as streets. Right-of-way is the, sidewalks is the same as the streets. Sidewalks are for pedestrians, streets are for cars, and sometimes pedestrians and bicycles and all. And, and folks can't make you repair streets, that's why they have street assessment districts and the like, but that doesn't mean that we don't have a duty.
That would be the same argument that Bill had about the streets and the East Maple Edition. If they don't do the sidewalks to our standards, I mean, I think that should be a part of it then, because if there's a blended, you know, you pay for half and I pay for half, and it has to be to these certain standards to do so, we're gonna run into the same problem just like the streets, like you said.
Well, there's always, if you want to encourage streets in your community, you would do it other than by this. This is gonna be done by a subdivider as a part of their cost, okay? So nothing you're doing here today, but if you wanted to extend this, you know, for the purpose of healthy living in the community, and you wanted to encourage people to repair, you know, the streets and to sidewalks in front of their homes, and to provide for new sidewalks in front of their homes, you would allocate a, a portion of that street sales tax that we had, and that we still have some dollars left, right? You would allocate a portion of that, and you would set up a program, you know, first come, first, first served basis, we're gonna pay up to, you know, twenty-five percent, whatever thing you said of the repair, replacement of any sidewalk in the community, we're gonna major it around this area, because this is really where we wanna concentrate, but, you know, any person that wants to do that, so, so if they've got a sidewalk, the tree's grown up, they push the sidewalk up, and, you know, they look at it and they worry about, you know, what if somebody trips there, you know, would provide some funding mechanism, some grant funding mechanism to, to serve that. You know, it's all about putting your dollars where your heart is, or where, you know, what you wanna fix.
I guess my point was, is we're setting standards, and if we're gonna treat the sidewalks like we treat our streets, then they need to be to our standards if we're gonna require them, if they're gonna put them in, is what I'm saying, instead of them just going in and putting in sidewalks.
Oh, no, oh, no, this is all ADA compliance, so that, that is a whole list of standards. In the original ordinances that I've done, they actually listed how thick, how whatever, ADA standards already have that, so I shortened the ordinance by making it ADA compliant.
Okay, and so that's just sufficient enough?
Yes, 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 it is.
All the plans have to be submitted as well?
Yes, although I, the, the original one, I, I've done, and some communities do have it all detailed out, okay? But I, but I'm convinced that this is okay.
Okay.
And we're certain that this was included in our older subdivision regulations?
My, follow-up to my, my previous question would be that, just so that we understand, we may be in these new subdivisions, be replacing sidewalks when we replace streets. Not saying we have to, I mean, you said that, but, but in trying to keep the city nice, if, if the streets and sidewalks are bad, I don't think we'd want to, just saying there's more costs there if we're requiring sidewalks.
I know that, that was a little bit off-topic, but in Oklahoma City, my son used to date this girl down there, and they had a sidewalk that's behind the house. It's, you got houses that look out, and the backyard, there's like a forty-foot strip of grass, it's like a walking trail, it's kinda like, you know, you've got that walking trail down through there.
Probably abandoned railroad, probably. That's what they've been talking about for years.
And, yeah, and then, he's wanting to build a big privacy fence. The HOA said you can build a fence three foot tall, because we wanna build, our people will walk through there and see in the backyard at these homes. So.
But those homes may not have sidewalks around in front of them either.
Well, I, I don't, I don't remember that, but it's like a walking trail type sidewalk, but there's all kinds of different ways to take care of that.
Brian, are you aware of communities that require some divisions that have sidewalks? Like. Brian, are you aware of communities that require subdivisions that have sidewalks?
Well, in any new construction you do, doesn't matter, subdivision or anything, you have to put a sidewalk that's commercial. And then I think all their subdivisions are barbed on one side of the road. I imagine if Enid's building, probably a lot of the other bigger communities are doing it as well.
Yeah, we stripped that out of this ordinance.
It just provides for amenity for the kids in the neighborhood and the older folks that like to walk.
I guess. If there was, I guess if there was a subdivision that wanted to do something like you, you're talking about, provide the sidewalks out back, I mean, this limits them, but it's only-
Well, I think that we could probably negotiate that, I mean, in the plat, when they want to submit the plat, they say, okay, I don't wanna put it here, but why don't we put a sidewalk back here? I think that that's gonna be, you know, negotiable.
I guess that's a side of the road.
I just, I think it'd be neat to promote walking in our town.
I don't disagree with that. One more.
No, I know that.
I don't wanna limit, it's the same kind of topics we've been talking about on all these ordinances, and just how we word it.
Bryce, could you word that, to say like, public right-of-way, because an alley behind a house like that would be deemed-
But in the case, like, I would bring up Gordon's example. He was wanting to put in a long, I don't remember what that creek is, but it's North Brookwood Park and all through there. He was wanting to put a walking trail through there, and I saw they subdivision for that. But if it were, and they want, you know, they wanted to put that walking trail along that creek, you know what creek I'm talking about? Versus having to put it on the road. I don't know that this clearly says they can do that. Not gonna be negotiated, that's a whole different story.
Yeah, I agree with him, you know, to the extent that you wanna do that, you change the word street to public right-of-way. So it would be a dedicated public right-of-way, it could be behind, it could be in front, but it's only on one side. I mean, the point there is that we're not wanting to make it on both sides. You know, we're not wanting to have required. Yeah, more cost.
Right.
I mean, that's what the purpose is. So, I mean, that's not a bad addition either.
I just don't wanna limit their design. If they lay it out where it doesn't go through one yard or something, and they've got to put it to a nice sidewalk, I don't see a reason why we shouldn't allow it, you know, if they can get around the neighborhood.
So what I have right now is an addition of requiring a plat afterward, city and new development. And then changing, in exceptions D4, changing the word street to public right-of-way.
If those two changes, I'll make the motion through ordinance number 2021 day 01.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hold on, please.
Miller.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Gilbeck.
Yes.
Ecker.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Stronger.
Yes.
Motion on emergency? Second.
Hold on, please.
Miller.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Gilbeck.
Yes.
Ecker.
Yes.
Brown.
Moore.
White.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Stronger.
Yes, thank you.
I've discussed COVID-19 pandemic. The background in there is what Bryce was talking a little while ago, passed out this bill. So hopefully, within a couple weeks, we'll be eligible to do Zoom meetings again.
Well, I would just say, you know, I mean, we can discuss right now, that's probably gonna happen. I mean, do you want that availability to anybody to Zoom in, the rest of the group to be here? If so, it's going to be an equipment increase of how much?
$15,000.
Yeah, we can do that.
What other, what else would that give us? Is that all that would give us?
Well, I mean, it would be the total equipment upgrade, that it's gonna need to happen at some point anyway. This equipment is eight years old at the moment, nine years old, eight years old. So it doesn't last forever. That's ancient in technology terms. It would allow us to Skype or Zoom or otherwise connect remote sources and still get them back out to their remote sources. Separate the audio stream so they don't create a lot of feedback, which is my biggest concern.
Would we be able to use that at City Hall too for meetings with folks?
Well, it's mobile, so I can theoretically use it anywhere.
Would it be able to move it?
Is it more compact than that?
The physical box is more compact than this, yeah, but it is a bit a lot more compact than this setup.
To make it ideal for him to move, we would have to have monitors and things up above locations, correct?
Correct.
Because you're talking about that box on the end.
Right, yeah. That box would be about a quarter of the size. The rest of it would stay. Would stay, no change.
If we, if we, if we did that, if some people chose to stay at home, some people chose to choose to come to the meeting, we could probably go back to our council chambers and be able to spread people out, if not everyone felt showing up.
I think that we need to at least give the option of Zoom for people that are under quarantine and things like that. And if we, if we can't do both options, then we stick with just Zoom, that's my personal opinion, and then-
I agree with you, Derek.
And then, if we can do it, which I'll say, pulling $15,000 out right now is tough, and you can talk about that if you want to here in a second, but the... He has come with a budget almost every year, and that's, I think, has been one of the pieces in that budget almost every time he brought it. And we haven't, for six years, we haven't given him any, right?
He's gotten some things.
Okay.
I think, I think-
Software renewals and-
Free, I think, two years ago and the year before that, I proposed it. I would've proposed it again in 2020, but, yeah.
Maybe it wasn't even-
Not even, so this is-
Just saying, he's been pretty fair to us, and there's been no talk of, we haven't approved a single budget. We haven't approved a single budget dollar in six years.
Well, we have approved him a budget.
On, on, uh-
Expansion.
Nice. Well, no, on, uh-
Toys!
Equipment.
What's the word I'm looking for, on, I hate it when I drop-
Capital outline?
Capital. That's the word I was looking for.
There you go. That's right, because as a council, you all prioritize other departments, like your police and your fire, your public safety has really been a focus of this community and for this council, so, yes.
All departments deserve it, I'm not trying to-
Exactly, yeah, yeah. I would say that we do have a funding source in the, with the trust funds, which that might be a great idea to look at as far as an option to pull through. Obviously, that would not happen before next meeting. There's also, if we can find savings in other departments, are there other ways that you could potentially cut? I mean, $15,000 is a large chunk to take out right now, as we're looking at it.
Well, it's suggesting, I'm just making-
If we give you $15,000 to back, how long would it take you to get it?
Minimum three weeks to get it all set up, yeah. What I would say, my recommendation from a technical perspective would be that if we have the opportunity to go back to Zoom only, that we do that rather than rush into this. Make sure that I, you know, I've been looking at this for several months, I'd like to look at it again. I hate buyer's remorse. I wanna buy it one time and have it do everything that we need it to do. So I would prefer to have a little more time to look at it before we decide anything on that, if that's the direction that you guys wanna go. Because in order to make it effective, it's gonna have to be from a single location. We'll need to set it up at the council chambers, so that we can have individual microphones, individual speaker sets, some sort of sound bedding equipment, you know, to optimize the experience. So that people aren't at home, aren't constantly getting screeches in their ears as they're trying to listen and participate. That's my biggest concern and the biggest challenge of the entire project, is the audio stream and not creating a feedback loop that kills everyone's hearing for the next, you know, several days. If we did it in a controlled environment like the council chambers, we could do that. But once we have that set, that can't really move anymore. The equipment can be moved, I can still do the same thing I've done for this type of setup for the Six Years Celebration Parade, you know, those types of broadcasts. But for a broadcast that is mixed in-person and remote, it would need to be done from a dedicated location.
So that $15,000, that just for the box, or does it include the setup that you just discussed?
That's everything, that's-
That's all of it?
It'll, yeah, what I estimate. It would be the new tricaster, it would be individual microphones for every person around the table, it would be an individual set of speakers for every person around the table. It would include, you know, additional hardware, cabling, that sort of thing, and dedicated computer for running Zoom.
I assume those are wired microphones, and that's why you're saying they're gonna be permanent?
Yeah.
So if you wanted to have meetings at City Hall, you would either need more mics, more monitors, things like that to do that stuff? But you could take that more, the expensive box-
Yes.
And use it.
Yeah, and that's far and away the most expensive part of it, I think it's $9,000. You know, the microphones are relatively expensive, the rest of the setup, I mean, computer speakers, 20 bucks a piece. An additional computer to host Zoom meetings and block that, that should be-
Now, I will say-
Go ahead, go ahead.
I will say that there has been discussion at the federal government of an additional COVID CARES Act, almost like the money that we received, well, exactly like the money that we've received previously as a drawdown on public safety salaries and things like that. This would be a, if the language is written similar, of course, it's not even passed yet, but going down that path, that would also be an option as far as a funding source.
So speaking of that, we did free up some money because we did get that CARES Act. Is that something that we can consider using? I mean, I agree with Tyson, in the interim, we should move forward with a Zoom meeting, because I think that would be easier for everyone to participate if they can, especially the elderly that want to participate in the meetings. But I do want to entertain the idea of upgrading the equipment. And if we freed up that, what was it, 275 or 375 that we have, is that something that we can entertain for the $15,000?
Sure. That money, once it came to us, it is free and clear. It does not have any restrictions on it, once it's been deposited into the city.
So if Tyson were to go out and we get some, you know, estimates and things like that on it, it's something that we could bring to the council and discuss, maybe reallocating that $15,000 out of that money that we have.
Looking at what we've already kind of pledged that toward.
Sure, yes, of course.
Larry actually has the power to spend the $15,000 on any expenditure, so if he was given a high sign from you, he could do that himself.
Why would he encourage us to do that?
As long as, as long as when the bill came through, you guys approved, that would be bad if that happened. Yeah, I mean, it's been a long time. I don't like to spend your money, but spending it on technology and this kind of deal, which can, which can help members not, you know, not come but still participate, I just think that right now is pretty sound. And taking those dollars from that, from that source is about as hand and glove as you can do, you know?
I would think so.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
I would like to add one comment. So, one flaw with the system, and it's not him, he does a great job, he does an awesome job. But from years of playing, I can just tell you, when we have a setup like that, we have a mainboard, we have honor boards we have, and it's in road cases. When you're moving this stuff, every single time, there's unnecessary wear and tear. But if you have it in a road case, all that stuff stays plugged in. And you just run your mics and your video, it's basically plug and play, and your system stays the way it should be. That way, you're not unhooking every single piece of equipment, putting it in the back of a car or in a truck or throwing it around or whatever. If you have that in a road case, and you have it plugged in just the way it is now, I mean, of course, you could make it more compact, because you'll have shelves and storage and... If you have that option, when he's done here, or when he sets up here, he literally rolls the case in here, and he plugs in his mics and his video, and he plugs in, and he's ready to go.
That's- The, that is something that I've looked at, especially early on. The problem is transportation, and we don't really have a vehicle dedicated for it. So it just has to fit in the back of my-
So you're asking for another thing?
I know!
He's a trailer.
There, once upon a time, even when I first started, there was a, the gentleman who ran this previously had set up his own bus and offered to sell it to us, and we declined that. And then, the police department had an old panel man, old government panel man that they got, that was their SWAT vehicle. I asked for that when they were circling it out and cutting it out. There's been an ambulance or two that's come up, that I didn't ask for, because, you know, I just kinda roll around in my own jeep, so whatever we do is just gonna fit in that. But I agree, you know, having it inside some sort of, you know, protective case makes it a little bit easier to-
Well, that would save hours.
Yeah.
Every time.
But I will say that I do treat all of this equipment as though I bought it out of my own money.
Well, obviously, you're looking to work by that. I don't wanna waste this time, but does everyone see a benefit of at least getting another quote with everything that would be required? I would also like Bill's suggestion of, Bill will have meetings in the City Hall building, be, if we do this.
I was talking about the council chambers, was talking about-
Well, I thought you were also the one that said, could we have, maybe it was Bryce, could we have meetings in the City Hall as well?
Oh, yeah, Bryce said that. I don't know, what are you talking about now?
I think we were just talking about the one-on-one meeting and stuff like that. No, I mean, I agree with you over-
Well, one-on-one.
Yeah.
Well, and like Lori brought up, you know, very early out of the meeting, a non-broadcast system is super easy and relatively expensive. It's only because we stream and broadcast to Penn, so three different streams going on, that it becomes an issue at all, so.
The other thing that, if we go back to Zoom meetings, I think that, I mean, we got away with it, but I don't think it was, looked on very favorable, that when we Zoom, one, I think it's only right for the public to be able to see us all. But I think, wasn't there, wasn't there some kind of state thing saying you had to be on video also? I thought we had a discussion at one point.
Well, I think that we complied with the posting requirement, I'd have to look back. Well, here's the statute, I'll sure take a look at it, but we'll always try to comply with, you know, whatever the state law is.
I thought we had a discussion one time about that they wanted us to be on video also.
The language, as I recall, read that if you had the capability of video, you're supposed to use video.
That may have come from me, because I talked about it noted that was required. We had to be in-person, seen on the screen to be on that.
And I had, I had some comments from the public, that a lot of times, they didn't know who was talking. You know, and it was, it was great, I mean, we all pointed out how many more people come to our meetings, because they could Zoom in, you know? But then, as council people have a discussion- But then as, as council people have a discussion, they couldn't quite tell who was talking and who wasn't talking. All right, any further discussion? All right, we will move on to item ten. And before I read this, Brian, you're about the one that's got to go, bud. Thank you. Can you wait in your car? All right, good night, thank you. Item ten, consider convening executive session to discuss the appraisal and purchase of certain real property related to the upper Black Bear watershed project pursuant to Title twenty-five, Section three oh seven v three of Oklahoma Statute as amended.
Motion to convene into executive session.
Settle.
Roll call, please.
Call, call there.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Give back.
Yes.
Center.
Yes.
Round.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Laurel.
Yes.
Strummer.
Yes.
Item Number 11, motion to reconvene in a regular session.
Motion to reconvene.
Second.
Call call please.
Collier.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Dealback.
Yes.
I heard.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Yes. Item 12, take any actions deemed necessary pursuant to executive session. Seeing none, item thirteen.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call call please.
Collier.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Dealback.
Yes, I heard.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Strummer.
Yes.